Okay, good morning. We are here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, December 7th, 2016. We are here in the courthouse square in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Cork Street Northeast. And if you will join us first for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have nobody, or none, signed up for public comment. I just want to make sure anybody that's here, they wanted to come and make public comment, they had an opportunity to do that. Seeing none, we'll go right ahead and move on to our consent count. No, presentation from Alan on the Gallen House Bridge. And I think IT is still trying to get us set up with a projector here.
Working on it.
Good morning, IT.
Morning. Sorry for the delay here.
That's all right. You gonna start off over here?
I guess I'll start off over here.
So this is about the Gallen House Bridge photo contest. And we all had a really good time out there. Was that back in May? When was that? We were out there celebrating the 100th year anniversary of the Gallen House Bridge. July? It was hot, I remember that.
It was hot, June, I think.
June.
But, yeah, it was a good time.
Sam's and mine and Janet's cars raced across that bridge. What year were those cars? 1908 or something? They were really old cars.
1906.
1906, yeah. That's good.
But yeah, so for the record, Alan Haley, Public Works Director. And what we're here today for is to celebrate.
It may not be on.
It may not be on, did you check and see?
Hello?
It's on.
One of the things we wanted to do with the Gallen House 100th anniversary was a photo contest. So we put it out on the web and asked folks to submit their photos, seasonal photos. And it was, some good photos that came in. But first, I guess today, I'd like to thank you guys for being willing to put up with us and spend the time with our photographers today and part of the celebration. We also, I'd like to thank the Gallen House Pub, Goshi Farms, Beer House in Mount Angel, and the White Horse in Malala for their sponsorship of this contest. Ryan Mo, who is the manager of the Gallen House Pub, is with us today. And I thank you for attending and for your continued support. So as you know, this is the 100th anniversary of the historic Gallen House Bridge. And it was built in 1916, so the cars you came across in were actually older than the bridge. It's, the Gallen House Bridge is the last covered bridge, as well as the oldest bridge in Marion County, and one of the oldest bridges in Oregon. So we had a panel of judges to judge these seasonal photographs of the bridge, which included one of our sponsors, Gale Goshi, with Goshi Farms. They chose one grand prize winner and four honorable mentions, whose submissions were deemed the best seasonal photos of the bridge. Might be getting close. So we'll just continue on. So I'd like to start by asking Ed Pateros, our grand prize winner, to come forward, receive his certificate, along with his $100 prize. He's the grand prize winner.
Sure.
Nice to have it on screen. Let's go down. Do you have a certificate?
We want to be in on this.
Right, let's have the portable mic. Just keep that.
So we might be able to have the cameras zoomed in on the person's photo.
Lift it around.
He just asked. Since you came, how do we have to do this? I don't know. I'm just going to ask him. I'm sorry. I apologize for the technicality.
See, it's the pictures like this tiny in the air, but you could zoom in on that to save another camera.
I have it on. Okay. Is it here? Why don't you give it to IT? Oh, the, I think, well, the problem is he can't get it to show up there. Oh, I see. That's a great idea. Just a second, wait a minute. So she's got him on a thumb drive, you could just bring up the thumb drive? Would that be okay? See, Joe's got it right now in his hand. Okay. All right, we're doing a workaround here. So they've got the pictures on a thumb drive, and they're trying to zoom in, but it's still pretty small on the camera, so, all right. So I think we're ready to go here.
Yeah, just, Ed, congratulations. Thank you very much for entering the contest. And I think, Alan, you just asked a question, when did you take the photo? What time of year?
That was about in September.
September. The light is just gorgeous with the clouds and everything, so.
A lot of it in our offices, you know, they like to take pictures.
Yeah.
Light in the painting, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, Ed, thank you very much. It was an unanimous decision for grand prize winner, and so thank you very much for attending. And if you stay up here with the rest of the group, we'll get a group photo eventually. But here is your certificate. And the photo framed.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to join the contest.
Very good.
Can you give a permission to blow on, put it in our office?
Yes.
That's on the website, so we'll.
Or the works. No. Do you have anything to know? We're gonna do a group photo.
Well, let's do individuals, any group.
So.
Where?
Just not in front of the screen, so you get a lot of glare from the light.
You're gonna do one at a time? And then?
Yeah, let's do it small groups, and then we can do questions.
Okay, very good.
Almost, okay, here we go, ready? One, two, three. All right.
Next, we have, stay up here, Ed. Well, just over here, you'll be part of our display this morning, was Gus Frederick, was our best spring photo winner. Yes, Gus, thank you very much. Mine up. Your certificate and spring photo.
Very lovely. Yeah, they do. So, I think we want to be back, let's all, let's all sort of.
Come on over here.
Right, yes.
All right.
Here we go.
You need your picture. All right.
Three, one, two, three.
Do another, good couple.
One, two, three.
Yeah, push it, might as well hold it there. Push it. Hold, just click and hold.
Yeah, there's nothing.
No, it's not.
I can get the phones, too. Oh. Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, yeah, that's the video. Thank you very much.
And then best summer is Mary Bathurst. And she's also the winner for the best winter scene. Thank you, Mary.
Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, so.
First, let me give you your certificates. For both. Best summer.
And winter.
So how was that winter?
Well, you'd have to talk to the judging panel, I think, to determine where it was. But.
That was the question I raised, wasn't it?
It was closest we got to the time of the season with no snow. We could paint some snow there, I think, so.
The trees have leaves on them.
She can take one tomorrow. She doesn't like, yeah, we'll take it tomorrow. We'll have to redo it once you come on up here.
Yeah, I just wanted to check the right picture, that was my question.
We did.
You did.
Sure, scoot over just a little bit, next to that Christmas tie.
Right, so you don't want the screen in the background. It's like that. There we go. One, two, three. Do you want everyone up here then?
Did, was Ann Markham able to come? She actually called in, she was too slick to get here this morning. So Ann Markham is the winner for our best fall photo, and we'll hold this for her and get it to her, so. No, no, yes, of course you will.
You have to look at it when you sign it. Yeah, see, that, see the leaves on the jacket.
Yes, definitely, definitely fall.
Has the sun coming through the.
Right, exactly.
If we move over here a little bit, that would be great.
All right. A little bit further, and without the screen. There we go.
Yeah, you might need to turn for this big group, so we can get everyone in without having to look too far away.
All right.
Ready? One, two. And other one more.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Something good happen?
I want to thank everybody who participated in our contest. It was a pleasure. Our judges had a good time going through and looking at them, and they'll be available to view in a slideshow that's on our website at www.gallenhousebridge.net.
Gallenhousebridge.net.
Dot net.
Is where you can see the photos?
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, it would be nice if somebody could get out there tomorrow and take a picture with the snow, that would be kind of a.
Or this afternoon, I think, might be a good shot, too.
This afternoon? Is that when it's supposed to happen?
It's potential, but tomorrow we get to, we'll stick her out.
So Alan, thank you, and thank you for your crews that are out there right now, de-icing and getting ready for tomorrow, and trying to keep the roads open for all of us. We really appreciate it, and I know the citizens of Marion County appreciate all the work.
Thank you very much. Yeah. I'm sorry, I'd be remiss, I need to thank also Jolene Bray and Tammy Amala from our office for helping all the work putting this contest together. They're definitely the trees in the background holding everything up, so thank you guys.
Yeah, Tammy. Okay. And again, thanks to all our contestants who went out there and took good pictures. So we are gonna go on to our consent calendar, and I believe Commissioner.
Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. It's shorter, more my style. It's under, versus under Business Services, approve a lease agreement with Pioneer Trust Bank for lease base and tenant improvements for the Health Department. And in Health, approve Amendment Number Two with Tri-West Group LLC. They had $30,000 in funding, $30,000 in funding to complete the Alternative Payment Methodologies Project. And that's all.
I will second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second, all those, any further discussion?
Just on the Alternative Payment Methodologies Project, that is going really well, and this is really worth it. I just need to tell you that. These consultants are doing a great job helping us with that. It's with Medicaid and mental health, and it's helping us figure out how to be accountable for the money.
Accountable and bill, right.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. And we are on to our action item. First action item is receive and consider appeal of hearings officer's decision denying conditional use, CU 16-014, Cloptonstein, Clerk's File Number 5716. Joe, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. Decided before you today is an appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying conditional use case 16-014, which was an application to modify the conditions of approval of conditional use case 7880. In 7880, a one-acre parcel in EFU Zone located on Seala Springs Road Northeast was approved for a farm machinery, equipment, and repair business. Conditions in that case limited the number of employees to two, and specifically did not permit the repair of automobiles, and maintenance of automobiles. The current case is to amend those two conditions to allow more employees and the repair of some automobiles. The planning director issued a decision approving the request subject to meeting certain conditions. Those conditions limit the income generated by the repair of non-farm vehicles to no more than 25% of the gross sales. Required the operator to maintain detailed information on the types of vehicles being repaired, and required the income information to be submitted to the planning director every six months. It also limited the number of employees to be determined by the capacity of the whole septic holding tank on the property. The applicant filed a request for reconsideration and suggested changes to the conditions to define what constitutes farm-related vehicles, and to modify the income reporting requirement to once a year. Also, the applicant wanted the condition requiring the reporting, the 75-25% split, to include language that if the sales fall below 75% in any particular year, that in and of itself would not be grounds to terminate the use unless it falls below 51%. So if it went below 75% for a year, that would automatically mean you have to stop unless it went below 51. That particular language was not carried forward in the reconsidered decision. So that was not included when the reconsidered decision was issued. The other conditions were included. On August 12th, the reconsidered decision was appealed to the hearings officer who held a public hearing on September 7th. On November 3rd, the hearings officer issued a decision denying the request after finding other provisions in Marion County Code 17-122-100, the conditional use was discontinued for a period of more than six months, and therefore is considered as being abandoned as no longer valid. This conclusion is based on a letter in the record from a farmer in the area stating that due to the death of the owner for the last couple of years, they'd had to tow some of the vehicles to town for repairs. In the appeal, the applicant claims that the hearings officer incorrectly interpreted 17-122-100 by drawing inferences submitted from the letter, and that the business was never actually abandoned. When the original owner was no longer able to work because of illness, his brother continued the business. However, he could not perform all of the services that some of the farmers in the area had required, so some of that had to be performed in town. The actual business itself continued to operate uninterrupted, however. The current owner purchased the property in 2015 and continues to operate the business. The applicant argues that the hearings officer incorrectly interpreted some of the criteria in the code, and finally indicates that they agreed with the conditions in the reconsidered planning director's decision. If the following language was added to Condition Three, and once again it's the language that would say failure to maintain 75% of the sales to the local agricultural community in any given year shall not in itself be grounds to terminate or disallow the use unless it falls below 51%. The Board has the options of accepting the appeal and remanding the matter back to the hearings officer, accepting the appeal and scheduling a public hearing with a suggested hearing date of January 18th, 2017, or later, deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision as your own. The applicant has agreed to extend the 158 deadline if the appeal is accepted. That deadline currently is December 21st. Staff recommends the Board accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing for January 18th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Joe. First question is, you hesitated, likely paused, for great effect after this, that the failure to maintain 75%, that language was not included in the hearings officer's conditions. Was that, do you have a sense of, was that intentional on the part of the hearings officer? Or?
That was the planning director's reconsidered decision.
That was what?
That was the reconsider, the planning director made the initial decision.
Okay, you're talking way too fast, so tell me.
I'm sorry. The planning director made the initial decision, the applicant asked for reconsideration, and one of that, that particular language added to one of the conditions. When the reconsidered decision was issued, the planning director did not include that.
Was that intentional, or was that not intentional?
That was intentional by the planning director at that time.
It was intentional?
Yes.
Why was it not included?
I would have to talk to Warren and find out exactly why that was not included.
Okay, well, it would be important for us to understand, because they're asking for it to be back, and if it was not included intentionally, why was that?
I do not have the answer to that.
Okay, so you're gonna get the answer for that then?
I can get the answer to that, yes.
All right, great. Okay. Second question I have, then, which is more to the issue at hand today, because we're not actually deliberating on the merits of the, or the substance of it, but rather whether or not to accept the appeal. And that is your sentence here that says, in the appeal, the applicant claims the hearings officer incorrectly interpreted and implied the particular code by drawing inferences to the letter. But it's the second half of the sentence, I think, that is more germane, and that the business was never abandoned. So if the applicant is able to provide evidence that the business was never abandoned, then does the rest of it kind of fall off, and then we, does that give the Board an opportunity, then, to interpret and move forward?
Correct, yes.
Right. So even if the applicant, I mean, even if the hearings officer applied a particular code correctly or incorrectly, the issue is if it wasn't abandoned, and they can prove that, then there's a chain, right? And so then, that means that we can then take a look at all of the other things, and so additional evidence could be provided for that.
That is correct, yes.
And that would, evidence could be provided orally in a hearing with whatever documentation they might have?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I follow that, except there will be some changes, is that all? There will be some changes over the original conditional use, isn't that right? What we decide on?
The request is those two specific conditions.
So some new things coming in.
Yes.
Number two, I just, I can tell by the number, when was the original conditional use made? Is it 78? Is that how it turned out?
Yeah, it was 1978, that's correct.
It's a long time ago.
And as you know, business changes over, yes.
All right, and there's some things that would be appropriate to say at the hearing, and I think I'd like to have that hearing.
Absolutely.
So before we take a motion, Joe, just to clarify, what are those two new things? Assuming we can prove that the businesses, or somebody comes with evidence that the business has been continuous, what are those two new things that are being asked?
The two specific conditions, the one condition limited the number of employees to two.
So they want to remove that?
They want to remove that and allow more employees if needed.
Okay.
The second condition was the, it specifically said, no automobile servicing or maintenance.
Okay, so they want to add some automobiles. And you're, you've talked about a 75% number, but not eliminating the conditional use permit unless it falls below 51%.
That is what the applicant's proposing, yes.
Okay.
That's what planning didn't propose, and that was why I asked why they didn't.
Right, yeah, okay.
But if I could just add one more thing, so in those two particular, so those were, that was the reason it was appealed in the first place, was on those two conditions, but then the whole thing fell apart, right? So now we're back to restore that if they provide the evidence, and then we would consider whether or not to modify those two conditions. So they would be needing to provide, you would be providing what the code says, and so on, and they'd be needing to say why it fits within.
Correct.
What Marion County allows, right?
Yes.
And so just out of curiosity, so the limitation, let's just take the limitation of the number of employees to two, was that in the original conditions or not?
That was one of the original conditions, yes.
Okay.
And I believe part of that was because, in that application, they said they were going to, there was only going to be two people working there.
In 1978, they said that.
In 19, yes.
And possibly that got forgotten over the years, and they've had more employees. And so then, the next question we'd have to determine at the hearing is whether or not our current code allows for that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so you want me to make a motion?
Please.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board would be receiving the appeal, and we receive the appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying the conditional use, in this case, 16-014, Cloptonstein or Stein, Stein, thank you, Clerk's File Number 5716, and set a public hearing for, and you said January 18th?
11th.
That's correct. The applicant is out of town, is out of town here in the month.
Okay.
Okay, so the 11th, it's on the staff report.
The government staff, yes, I'm sorry, that needed to change. I got word late last week that they will be out of town at that time, so.
Okay.
So for, so January 18th is okay? January 18th, 2017?
After you second it.
Did I get everything in there?
She's in the middle of a motion.
That was my motion.
Yeah, but he's got a question.
Just so we discussed it, and it's not what I want even, and I assume it's because of expense, but would it be wrong to have a whole new conditional use application based on current standards and what's really in effect today? Would that be the other way you could look at it? Should we?
That would be, that's what the hearings officer suggested if this one was abandoned, but that is something that someone could do, yes. They could come in with a completely different proposal.
With their.
That's Plan B, though, if we approve this, then they don't need to do that.
I understand that, but I'm just asking, should Plan B be what we do? That's all. I'm not even saying I support it, but it just seems like it's cleaner, it's current, and, but you can get there this way, so, okay, fine, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to know.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in support of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. So we'll have that hearing on January 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost 9:30.
We got a couple of minutes to wait for our public hearing at 9:30. And is Tom here? Got a couple minutes.
You could read the calendar now if you wanted to, or we could talk about something.
Sure. I'll, let me read the calendar, so I don't have to do that at the end of the board session today. So today is the 7th, and we want to honor our 75 years of Pearl Harbor Day. Today at noon, Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luis's Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn. Are you going to that?
Yes, I am.
I am, too.
Okay. And then tomorrow, on Thursday, the 8th, at 7:30 a.m., Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant on 498, or 4998 River Road, Kaiser. And tomorrow on the 8th, at 10 a.m., a work session at the Oregon Garden, about the Oregon Garden, here on the fifth floor, the Silverton Conference Room. Did I miss something?
No, I just need to make sure I was going.
Yeah, it's the Oregon Garden.
Yes.
Are you gonna be on ice skates?
No, that's, that was a one-time event.
And that work session is here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. On the 8th as well, tomorrow, is, at 12 o'clock, is the Casa Lunch at the Red Lion Hotel. I think I'm seeing, I don't, I think I'm participating in that some way. On Monday, the 12th of December, at 8 a.m., Association of Oregon County's Steering and Legislative Committee and Board Meeting, location at the local government center at 1201 Cork Street, Northeast Salem. On the 13th, which is Tuesday, at 7:30 a.m., State and Marion County Meeting, location at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North, Third Avenue in Stateon. On the 13th, Tuesday, at 9:30 a.m., we have a work session on Parks here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. December 13th, Tuesday, at 1:30 p.m., Marion County Reentry Council, location here in the Commissioners' Boardroom, I like to say Ballroom, on the fifth floor at 555 Cork Street Northeast. On the 13th, Tuesday, at 5 p.m., Oregon County Caucus Dinner at the Salem Conference Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast. On Wednesday, the 14th, we're back here at 9 a.m. for a board session. Wednesday at 10 a.m., the 14th, a work session on the Oregon Garden, again, in the Silverton Conference. Wednesday at ten a.m., the fourteenth, a work session on the Oregon Garden, again, in the Silverton Conference Room. That must, they're assuming we're done here at ten o'clock. And on Wednesday, the fourteenth, at two p.m., Capitol Community Television CCTV taping, location at the CCTV office at five-seven-five Trade Street, Southeast Salem. And on Wednesday, the fourteenth, at three p.m., Governor's Reentry Council, location at the Oregon State Capitol, room three-fifty-nine-hundred Cork Street Northeast. I get to go back to the Capitol next week. Fun. And we are at nine-thirty, yep, officially at nine-thirty. We are going to open a public hearing. I'll open a public hearing on, from the assessor's office, public hearing to consider adopting a limited property tax exemption pursuant to Senate Bill five fifteen thirteen, which I believe was passed in the last session over in the Capitol. Tom, you're here to bring us up to date on that?
Correct. Commissioners, Chair, I'm Tom Rolfing, Marion County Assessor. I have with me Kay Brandon and, and the other people that deal with this, with this program the most in our department. So this is Senate Bill fifteen thirteen that was, was passed by the Senate Legislature, which in two thousand and sixteen, which allows by resolution or ordinance, local governments, county governments to
Microphone closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which, which allows local governments to, to exempt up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of assessed value for the homestead of owned property owned or occupied by the surviving spouse of a fire service professional, police officer, or reserve officer who was killed in the line of duty. So we're asking that you consider either enacting this by resolution or enacting it by ordinance or, or, or not enacting. But providing guidance.
Okay, Commissioner, you wanna make some comments?
Yeah, I want to make a few comments, and I, first of all, I have a technical question for Gloria. So one requires a vote of the people, the other does not, so it's the resolution that does not, is that correct?
That's correct. The resolution would take effect upon passage by the Board of Commissioners unless some other date is specified in the resolution. An ordinance, of course, that provides an exemption from taxation under the state statutes would be referred to the voters for voter approval. One county did choose to do it that way and sent it to the election, the November ballot, and it was approved by the voters. Most of the other counties that are considering it are going by the resolution option, which is allowed. It's similar to some of the other programs, the taxation programs that they've done by resolutions or authorized by resolution. And then a, a decision point for the Board of Commissioners, of course, is that the legislation allows the exemption for the surviving spouse of the first responders to be up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But the amount, of course, is an up-to amount, so you could set some other amount. Some counties have chosen to do that, to, to select some amount other than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Okay, and just in our packet, we do have a resolution drafted for our review. And there is a list of, of twelve counties that have enacted resolutions, Baker, Clackamas, Klatsup, Columbia, Crook, Josephine, Lincoln, Malheur, Morrow, Multnomah, Washington, and Yam Hill, and then you mentioned Jackson. It also lists Lane that hasn't acted an ordinance. Have they taken that to the ballot yet, or do we know?
I'm, I'm not sure if it wa, if Lane, if it was on the November ballot or not.
Yeah, it doesn't say on this sheet. So I became aware of this legislation that was passed because Mayor Rick Lewis from Silverton, who used to be the police chief of Silverton for a number of years, and now has run successfully for mayor. And he is on our Public Safety Coordinating Council. So we had a community forum out in Silverton, we had community forums all over the county, but one of them was in Silverton. And Rick attended that particular forum and provided a letter to the Board of Commissioners asking that we consider enacting, and he didn't suggest by resolution or whatever, but moving forward with the Senate Bill fifteen thirteen in the county. So we brought that to the Board of Commissioners for review to determine whether or not the board was interested in considering it. Some of the questions that came up is, so what would the impact be of this particular bill if it was enacted in Marion County? It provides, as Gloria mentioned, up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of assessed value for each homestead owned and occupied by a surviving spouse of a fire service professional, police officer, or reserve officer killed in the line of duty. So this would not only impact the taxing, the taxes received by Marion County for Marion County services, but it's one of those kind of you, probably rare instances where the commissioners can impose by resolution tax exemption that also then provides that exemption to all the taxing jurisdictions. So school districts, the community college cities, and so on. So oftentimes, the, those jurisdictions are interested in how much that's going to impact them. We were not able to do a comprehensive look, but we, our staff did look into the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, and they have a memorial, they have people listed in a memorial for fallen officers and firefighters. So they went back to nineteen ninety-five and said if, if these officers that were killed in the line of duty, if their spouses are Marion County residents, and if they're, they've remained in Marion County, and then would come forward and ask for this tax exemption, how many people would that be? And it ended up being six people that we were able to identify. Now certainly there may be surviving spouses of officers that were fallen in other counties that now have moved to Marion County. We weren't able to do that wide a search. But I think what it tells us, our hunch was, that this wouldn't have a huge fiscal impact on any of the jurisdictions. And then the assessor's office took a look at the surviving spouses and said that the ma, that the tax forfeiture off of that snapshot would be just under twenty-six thousand dollars per year to all of the jurisdictions combined. So when, so what, what we did as commissioners is we took this issue, we wrote, we took this issue brief and the information, and when we were going to our monthly luncheon and breakfast meetings that we have with the city of Woodburn, we go down to Staton and, and meet with, generally there's sublimity Staton, sometimes on Spill Turner at those meetings. And we talked to City of Kaiser, we meet with them for breakfast. We went out to Silverton, and Silverton and Mount Angel officials were there, Salem, and got some feedback, just informally, from the cities there about how that would work. And, and each jurisdiction kind of has a percentage in mind when they look at taxes. They know that the city gets one about half or something like that. And, and so every, each jurisdiction can say, well, ours is eight percent, or ours is less than one percent. And they can take that of that twenty-six thousand, kind of figure out what the impact would be. I think the general consensus was that it wouldn't be a significant fiscal impact. There were some officials that were, what's the word, kind of wondering whether or not this particular benefit to surviving spouses was needed in light of the other benefits that they get, you know, or whether it was a meaningful type of, of gesture to make for this group. But I, I think all in all, everyone felt like it was the, an appropriate thing for us to do, to move it forward. I don't think we heard anyone saying, "Don't, don't bring this forward." The other piece that I wanted to add is then, the Public Safety Coordinating Council was presented with this proposal at one of their meetings, I think it was a couple of months ago, maybe two or three months ago. And they, as a group, and that, that group includes, I don't know how many people were on there that day, but the roster includes about twenty-nine people, and it includes police chiefs, mayors, sheriff's office, district attorney's office, health department, juvenile department, some citizens at large, longtime citizens, right, domestic violence, so Pete McCallum, who's been on city council in Woodburn, and Ed McKinney, who's just kind of an all-around
Good guy.
Good guy, right, that gives you some good perspective, so judges from the circuit court. And so they were presented with this and voted unanimously that to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we pass this, this resolution for Marion County. Then the last thing I would mention is that we received a letter of support, I believe it was on six. So that, was that yesterday or day before, Monday? From, actually, it's from all the fire chiefs in Marion County. To, at their board meeting in October, the, the Marion County Fire Defense Board that represents all the fire chiefs voted unanimously to support Marion County adopting Senate Bill fifteen thirteen. And I got an email from one of the fire chiefs back in October, asking whether or not we, we would be interested in doing this. And Jason Myers got the email and said that the Board of Commissioners was already working on it and copied me on it, and then I confirmed that, so I think that's what triggered them.
Who was that from, if I could ask?
Uh, let's see, Paul Iv, Paul Iverson?
From Woodburn?
Fire, sent an email. Oh, they were interested in getting us, well, firstly, it was start, it was initiated by Terry Riley, fire chief from the Marion County Fire District, number one. And they had heard about this at a national meeting and wanted to know if they should set up a work group to start working on it. And so then Paul Iverson wrote and said, "I think Marion County Commissioners are on board. They presented this in July at a meeting I was at with local leaders." And then Jason said, "Chief Iverson's correct, and I've CC'd Commissioner Carlson, so she can give us an update." And that's when I said that we'd be holding a pub, you know, we've been letting people know about it, and we'd be holding this public hearing, and we'd keep them informed. So once the public hearing was noticed, Jolene Kelly, who's in the audience, our public information officer, sent out a press release and sent that press release, I believe, to all the fire chiefs, police officers, the list that we had from all the jurisdictions, the cities, mayors, so that everyone would be aware that we were having this public hearing today, and it would be an opportunity for people to give their opinion on whether or not they thought we ought to do this. So that's everything I have to say, I think.
And as usual, you cover everything. I did have one small world thing. I was with Staton Fire Chief Jack Carragher this morning, and he said he couldn't come in, but asked that I would make note that he was very much in favor. It doesn't cost very much, it means a whole bunch to both he and the volunteers and everybody in emergency services, so.
I think it's the volunteer firefighters that are gonna get the greatest benefit out of it, I think.
Yeah, because they don't get all the other stuff.
Right, except, I think the police officers do have a number of other benefits that surviving spouses get, but.
So was there anything else to bring up?
Well, did anyone sign up?
No. No, there's nobody signed up for the public hearing.
And I think that we're bringing this back for action right at, next week, is that correct? We're not deliberating on it today. This is just set up as a public hearing and not as an action item.
So the only thing I would mention in addition to what you said was the, the, there was discussion about the issue of the vets. And I noticed that some counties even brought that into the picture. But we just want to, especially on today, December seventh, we want to recognize those that have, have given everything for us. And this is public servants that are in public safety here in, in the state of Oregon. And as we noticed in our materials, there's a list of several that, that have given their lives in the line of duty in the last fifteen years, so. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
We do, and I guess just to mention on the veterans issue that we already have a tax exemption for veterans. It's not part of this particular bill, but it's existed for a number of years. Tom's nodding his head yes, so that's true.
All right, Chair Cameron, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Okay, motion and second to close the public hearing. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are closed out of the public hearing, and since we read the calendar already, we're done with all our formal items. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Kay.
There wasn't much left for me to say.
Well, in, in talking about what we have done recently, we had a department head elected officials meeting on Thursday, and it was a short meeting because we have our annual holiday luncheon with the department head elected officials, and that happened last Thursday as well. But this year, I think it was Commissioner Brentano, in his usual style, asked us to go around the table and talk about what we were thankful for. And it really highlighted for me what a blessing it is to have the leadership that we have in this county. I thought that was just an absolutely outstanding meeting and really appreciated that discussion, so just wanted to say that.
Yeah, it was a great, it was really, really good to hear, hear the positives going back and forth about how everybody works together and, you know.
That's great.
Well, I was up late, I was up late, I was in, I was just saying this, the research center, the OSU Extension Research Center, which is actually in Clackamas County, right there above the, the border last night late, and a discussion on making, as an advisory committee, obviously, we don't tell them what to do, but we give them advice on some really good research projects, creative things for our agricultural community. And it was right in line with yesterday at SEDCOR, we had a presentation from Wilco about their hazelnut processing plant that they're under construction in Donald.
I went to the opening a couple of weeks ago, the groundbreaking.
Right, yeah, thank you for doing that. The, they, they had some market presentations, and then the, they're gonna have a distribution center there. Sam, you probably figured this out already when you were there, the distribution center, they're gonna move all their distribution from Mount Angel over to there. And then the hazelnut process, and I didn't realize that they had purchased or merged with Oregon hazelnut processors or whatever, one of the big companies, and that will be there. But it was, it was interesting to hear the discussion about the hazelnut market. And about seven, and this company's about seventy percent of their product goes to China. And in one area of China, and many times they're out of nuts, and that there is not a market for hazelnuts on the east side of the Rockies. That people can't get them back there. And so you've got this whole market of hazelnuts within the U.S. even, that is relatively untapped and can be moving forward. So that was encouraging. They, they were talking about how many hazelnuts have been planted and were going to continue and what the crop was.
You were telling me about how they might help with, and I said this a couple of different times. This, this county, this valley is making such an investment in hazelnuts, filberts, that we certainly want to make sure that we do everything we can to support them. And that's why this facility really caught my attention there in Donald. A little different, I don't know what it meant, but they, because I, you know, I'll just say what it is. The, the highlight of this new facility is that it's food grade, but, but I mean, that must be taking it up to, to another standard because I, right out of, out of the polar husk there, food grade in my eyes, so I don't know what it means. But it's a special, special way of handling and to meet specifications, I'm sure. But I'm sure glad they're doing it. But you talked that they might have something that would help with the
Some of the disease.
Insect problems.
Well, some of the research that they're doing up at OSU, that there's actually a, a wasp, which kind of scared me. Of course, you got the spray, we can always take care of it. There's actually a wasp that's in China that they they think actually attacks this larva of this certain thing that's starting to get into the hazelnuts. So, you know, they, they, the old hazelnut trees are being destroyed by some blight, I don't know where it was. So they've got these new, what do you call them, varieties that have been
Resistant.
resistant to that, but now they've got other insects and something that was getting into the new trees. And they're trying to look for ways to be able to fight that, right?
We want to make sure they thrive and survive, anything we can do.
And somebody from the Department of Ag found a wasp in Portland. They, they, they think this wasp is out there in the universe, and they found a wasp that is in, was in Portland at somebody's home that they say is very closely related to this China, China wasp. You know, came over in a container or something, I don't know. So they're doing this research and trying to breed these things and see if they can do it. But it's kind of scary, you let out a bunch of wasp, and next thing you know, you go bite into a hazelnut, and it's like, mm. I, I go to those things and go, I don't know, sure, yeah. Anything else?
Well, we were at a dinner last night, I thought you were gonna talk about that. Swamet?
Well, I wasn't there, because I was at another.
We have a good group of people there, Kevin. We have a good group of people there, Kevin, and I know you got involved right off, master recycler and stuff, and Janet's been leading the group well, but, uh, and I told him this, that, that it's just real comforting to know that we have some people that are educated and, and up to date in solid waste issues that we can turn to for advice, so, I'm pretty happy with where they're at and where they're going. Then you go with the fact that I drew number one on the gift exchange.
Exactly.
It was a pretty wonderful evening.
So I thought you were bringing that piano here today. What, what happened to that?
It's already laid out on our, our big room floor, yeah.
Oh, so Caroline's, is she interested in it?
It'll be going today.
So you drew number one, which means you get to pick last?
He gets to pick first, and he gets to steal last.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
And I'm good.
So you picked first, and what'd you get?
It's a, uh, they used to like that movie big, no, no.
It's the, it's that piano, like they have, that they had on big, where they, where they, you know, it's great big, and you'd use your feet and step on it.
She was going to play something for us this morning, and now I didn't bring it, but we can...
So nobody stole that from you?
Well, they tried.
Oh, yeah, they stole it from me once, and then he got to, and then, then he picked another thing, which was this, uh, wreath kind of a thing
Rosemary.
that had rosemary in it, and so then someone stole that from him.
Yeah, what were they thinking?
So then he, then he stole the piano back, and it was a two, it was limited on two steals on anything, so then he was solid in that sense, right?
Yeah, he's happy.
It was perfect.
Well, I'm not so sure that you didn't have more fun and, and at your deal, but I, we only meet one, we hadn't met since May on this advisory committee, and Bondi does a good job up there, and he was having a hard time getting people there, and I said, "I'll be there," so, um, yeah, and it goes from five, starts at five and it goes till eight o'clock, and we didn't, we didn't get out of there till eight-fifteen, so it was a long night. And then I come down the freeway, I noticed they had the icero down already.
Yeah.
It was pretty good, they, they're out there.
Tomorrow could be a bad day.
My window was frosty.
Okay, we good?
All right, yep.
On to Woodburn, have some good Mexican food, and hear what's going on in Woodburn. All right, we're adjourned.